Good evening. Welcome to the Township of South Orange Village Planning Board Regular Meeting, Monday, May 5, 2014. Jeddah, will you please call the roll?
Yes, Mr. Colton Max.
Here.
Mr. Lerner.
Here.
Mr. Rosner.
Yeah.
Mr. Miller.
Here.
Mr. Torpe.
Here.
And Ms. Harris.
Yeah.
Pursuant to Section 5, Chapter 231, PL 1975, this is to state for the record that adequate notice of this meeting has been provided to the public by posting and maintaining the annual notice of regular meeting on the bulletin board in Village Hall, by mailing the annual notice of regular meetings for 2014 to the South Orange Maplewood News Record and the Star Ledger in December 2013, and by filing said notice in the office of the village clerk. Now, before we get started, does everybody have a copy of this evening's agenda? Is there anyone who does not have a copy of the agenda? Okay. So I think we're good to get started. The first item on the agenda is the approval of minutes of the regular meeting held on Monday, April 7, 2014. Hopefully, people have had a chance to review the minutes. I will entertain any conversation or motion at this time.
So move.
Okay, so we have a motion from Michael and a second from Adam. Okay. I think we can probably do this by voice vote. Or is there anybody who needs to recuse themselves for any reason?
Why?
Okay.
Or abstain.
Okay. So just call the roll, please.
Mr. Colton Max.
Yes.
Mr. Lerner.
Yes.
Mr. Rosner.
Yes.
Mr. Miller.
Yes.
Mr. Torpe.
Abstain.
And Ms. Harris.
All right. Thank you very much. Now, second item on the agenda is proclamations. I now have the very good fortune, we have the very good fortune, of welcoming back some of those individuals who have given so much of their time to the township and served with distinction on this planning board and, in the last few months, have stepped down. And we are joined, I think, by, there are four people for whom I have proclamations, three of whom I see seated in our audience. And I would like to note that we're joined this evening by Thomas Hutt, by Allison Brown, and by Eli Goldstein. And I would like to read the resolution. It is similar for each of these individuals, with the exception of their years of service. And I would like to have the opportunity to read those into the record. And then I'd very much like if they would join us onstage to accept those proclamations and then hopefully, very quickly, to have a picture snapped for posterity. The proclamations read as follow. Township of South Orange Village, Essex County, New Jersey, proclamation recognizing and honoring each of the individuals named. For Mr. Hutt, nine years of service. For Mr. Brown, five years of service. And for Mr. Goldstein, four years of service. On the South Orange Planning Board, whereas these individuals were appointed to the South Orange Planning Board in their respective years, serving as a Class IV member, and whereas each of these individuals served continuously for that number of years as a Class IV member to the South Orange Planning Board, and whereas each of these individuals has always given unselfishly of his time and expertise on the planning board, earning the respect of fellow planning board members and professionals and making a difference in the community where he lives, and whereas each of these individuals has continuously demonstrated an uncommon measure of public spiritedness and has given a standard of excellence in public service, now therefore, I, Harold Colton Max, Chairman of the South Orange Planning Board, on behalf of the planning board and its professionals, do hereby acknowledge and thank Eli, Tom, and Allison for their years of dedicated service to the South Orange Planning Board and for making a significant contribution to our village, and we extend best wishes for your continued success in all of your future endeavors, presented this seventh day of April or this fifth day of May, whichever you choose, of 2014. So, thank you all very much. We hope you will come up and accept. And I'm going to prevail, if I can prevail upon the members of the board to join me up here for a moment, that we might have a picture for posterity's sake with these members. Jeddah has generously offered. You want to use your phone? Okay.
Very good.
How are you, Eli?
Hey, Allison.
Hey.
How's it, Patrick?
Hey, Ben.
Good, good and safe.
Good.
Allison Brown.
Tom?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Allison?
You got a bubble bomb very much?
Who's getting the rabbit ears?
Alex, I think you are.
Yeah.
Only the youngest.
I've gotten worse.
So we'll face Jeddah.
Sort of turn the semi circle around a little bit this direction.
You got us all in there?
Put this on.
Thank you very much.
I did offer, by the way, that those members could, we could have changed the order so they could have stayed for the full meeting, but they declined that offer for some reason. Jeddah, I think it should be noted that one of our other board members has joined us. Well, good evening, Neil, and welcome to the meeting.
Sorry for being late.
No. Apologies are totally unnecessary. Welcome. There was a request made by a member of the public prior to the starting of the meeting that perhaps there might be some number of people here or here tonight for one particular piece of business. And if that being, if that was the case, I said I would ask the board if it would entertain making a change in the order of the agenda. So just if I could ask, and this is very unscientific method by show of hands, are, if you're here for the discussion of the Central Business District Redevelopment Plan, would you do me a favor and raise your hands if you're in the audience? All right. So what I see is that the members of the audience who are here are here for one particular item. So I'm going to ask the board whether or not anybody has a problem changing the order in the agenda to hear that item now. Does anybody have an issue with that? Okay. Hearing none, then, we're going to change the order of the agenda so the discussion of the statutory review ordinance number 2014-03, amendment to the CBD redevelopment plan be heard now. The rest of the agenda will go forward as laid out. So at the last meeting, we started, very briefly, a discussion that was prompted by the Village Board of Trustees, having introduced a ordinance making changes to the redevelopment plan for the Central Business District. At that time, we decided to postpone giving our thoughts as to whether it was consistent with the master plan as is required under, you know, under the rules governing this, and with the idea that we would discuss that this evening. So hopefully, the members of this board have had an opportunity to review the documents provided to us. And I just, I will ask council, the order in which, I mean, obviously, at some point, do we take, I assume we're going to take some kind of comment from the public, would that be an, okay. So the question, the question I have, not having sat over a discussion of this nature, is whether, what the order of this should be? Should it first be a discussion amongst the board members and its professionals, then open it for the meeting, and then decide to vote? Would that be the appropriate way of handling it?
Yes, sir. Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. So having said that, I guess the way I would start, unless anybody has any objection to this, is to ask our professional, I mean, this was prepared by higher Grule and Associates. We do have Susan Grule with us tonight, and perhaps if we might start with her offering us some insights as to what is, what is in this, and then we could take our discussion from there. Is that okay? Okay. Susan, please.
Okay, is this on now? Yes. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As, at the last meeting, I had given a brief overview of some of the key changes that were made with respect to the proposed amendment to the CBD redevelopment plan. And in terms of the statutory standard, in terms of the planning board's determination as to the consistency with the master plan and the planning documents of the township, there is a statutory section on page 18 of the draft that, that talks about relationship to other plans, and I guess that would be, you know, just one of the focus of the, of this board's recommendation or comment. And what we've done is we've looked at it in relationship to the 2011 reexamination report, the 2009 downtown vision plan, the 2000, and the 2007 smart growth plan, as well as the, which really isn't particularly relevant, adjacent municipalities. We also looked at the Essex County Master Plan and the State Strategic Plan to determine consistency. And as noted in the, as noted in the summary of these documents, we had looked at, for example, the 2011 reexamination report, and there was, there were recommendations regarding update of permitted uses and strengthening the design standards in the plan. And those are two key components in, in the draft. There was, and as we went through this, the vision plan and the smart growth plan, it really focuses on the fact that it's the revitalization of the CBD and that that is really the key goal. The intent of the draft plan is to, again, provide a more updated version of uses, to look at an overlay district on those parcels which do not front on South Orange Avenue to provide an expansion of what permitted uses would be, to permit non-retail uses on the first floor, and also to provide design standards, more specific design standards as it relates to the CBD areas. So it cleaned up a lot of other areas where there were some minor inconsistencies, but those were the key pieces that were part of this amendment. And I'm happy to answer any questions regarding that, but I did, and the conclusion in the, just to, the conclusion in the, in the draft plan is that this draft plan is consistent and with the goals and objectives that are identified in the planning documents, as noted in this planned draft.
All right. Thank you. Thank you, Susan.
Sure.
Any questions among the board members for Susan at this time? Michael.
Susan, can you go over the parking requirements of the proposed change versus the existing?
Actually, as I recall, there were no changes to the parking requirements. We talked at the last meeting, and I think there's a general agreement, that there certainly is a need to do a comprehensive study of the parking downtown. And certainly, the idea of double, triple, quadruple counting spaces is, is an issue that this board has raised, and certainly has been raised in some of the planning documents. I would say that it's a good, it's a good problem to have to solve because it indicates that people are actively using the downtown and that there aren't spaces that are open because that isn't a good thing either. But clearly, that is an issue. So that isn't specifically addressed in here. That's a broader issue that, that needs to be addressed. So there really aren't any particular changes.
Well, the one change that I'm talking about, or the one issue is on page nine of your report, and that deals with wellness centers.
Yes.
And it's like four spaces per thousand.
Yes.
Can, do you have any idea on how large a wellness center would be versus the inventory of, of existing first-floor space right now?
No. I don't. There is no.
What a typical size of a wellness center would be?
Um, I've seen them, I've seen the range from 3,000 to Berkeley Heights is a wellness center, Summit Medical Group is a wellness center in its own way.
Yeah, wow.
So, I mean, we can, there's an expansive, it's a very, although we've tried to define it here, it's kind of an open, there's some flexibility in that definition.
Okay.
With some controls.
Other questions?
I have a question.
Please.
I would just ask if, whether or not the proposed changes to the Central Development Business District Redevelopment Plan, not only are they consistent with the master plan, but do they further any of the goals of planning in general?
Oh.
It would seem that, that one of the objectives that you referred to is that you, these changes will help further.
Revitalize.
Revitalize the downtown district.
Right.
Which is obviously one of the goals of any redevelopment plan for a central business district. So what exactly and how is that going to work? Is there any, are there any facts which would mitigate against making that change?
I think that there was a concern, again, a formalized concern about the design standards. I think there was also a need to clean up some of the affordable housing references, cross-references. There was discussion about, about off Main, off South Orange Avenue, and whether there should be a expansion of the uses. And I have to say that in our, in my experience, that that is definitely a policy decision. I don't think that there's a right answer or a wrong answer to that. From a planning perspective, I think it can be legitimized either way. I think that the key part of that is that you want, that clearly, South Orange Avenue is the spine.
Correct.
Is the, is the core of the downtown. And that, I think, a while back, was determined to be a continued spine of the downtown. Whether there, many communities have permitted office on the first floor in their downtowns, and a lot of communities haven't. A lot of communities have cut back on the geographic, the physical boundaries of their downtown because, to a certain extent, you can dilute the downtown by having it too expansive. So there's, there are a lot of considerations as it relates to that.
I guess what I'm, what's occurring to me, and I think you're familiar with it as well, with your work with the zoning board, as do I, that have there been applications recently which would indicate that this is a, a, this would promote what seems to be already happening, which are applications for use variances for office space on the first floor off South Orange Avenue. I mean, we had, we had a recent application on Valley.
Mm-hmm.
Right? For the doctor, and we have, there's another one pending, I forget where, but I know there's another one pending. I think it's on Irvington or Prospect. The same type of thing. In other words, there seems to be a trend which is happening, that applicants are making these types of applications to the zoning board for use variances for retail use on the first floor in the Central Business District, which are not on South Orange Avenue, and I'm just wondering if that plays any part in this change.
I think that's a factor that can be considered, certainly, in the, in the policy decision of this.
Okay.
Of the, of the township.
Susan, could you elaborate, especially for those people who are not here or don't have the benefit of looking at the plan? Because Patrick just referred to, you know, South Orange Avenue being the spine, but can you elaborate just a little bit on what is included actually in the Central Business District?
Ooh. Okay. It extends to, along, South Orange Avenue and Sloan Street are the key corridors. It extends from, along South Orange Avenue, essentially from Church Street, up to, I guess it would be beyond the Irvington Avenue intersection. And it goes to, to the end of Third Street, along Sloan Street, and also along Vos Avenue to the post office, actually. That's about the boundary. There are different sub-districts. There are which, which address some of the, what I would say, specialized areas, either that have been developed or have, or in the course of being developed. For example, the Biffa site, what's known as the Biffa site, the old ShopRite site, it's known as the old ShopRite site. And, and then some of the areas along, again, along, near the railroad station.
I do have another question, but I don't want to, I want to let others ask. Anybody have any questions at this point? If not, can you, you elaborated, or you touched on a subject which is near and dear to my heart, which is affordable housing. You said there were things cleaned up in here, and I'm wondering if you could tell me what was cleaned up. And the other thing is that, and I was reading the language, I was a little confused by at least one discussion of it which seemed to be somewhat contradictory, which I will now have to relocate because I've been turning pages here and there. But, which seemed, it seemed to suggest that there wasn't any affordable housing planned for the area yet, which, but yet, at the same time, that there should, that there was a requirement for affordable housing. So I really.
Yes.
Just having difficulty understanding that. Could you elaborate?
Sure. When the village a number of years ago was in litigation and was, ultimately, had a compliance plan that was approved by the court, there were certain parcels that were given actual numbers for affordable housing. There was also a term, which, Harold, I know you know, additional affirmative measures, where if the concept was if redevelopment occurred, that it should ha, and there were more than, there were five or more residential units that were created, then there would be a 20% set aside, there would be an affordable housing obligation. In the compliance plan for the township, the downtown area was considered to be an additional affordable, an additional affirmative action, that if there was any redevelopment in the future with residential, that it would be required to have an affordable housing component without any numbers attached to it. So that's how that happened.
Which could be either, could be satisfied either within the area or outside the area?
Well, there, it cross, the redevelopment plan cross-references a section of the land development ordinance, the township's land development ordinance, which specifically addresses affordable housing and the options that are available. One of the problems with the old plan, or the existing plan as it's currently structured, is it referenced the wrong section of the land development ordinance.
Okay.
So there was a need to clean it up. There was a change in the, in the base ordinance, and that wasn't consistent.
Okay. All right. Sal, did you have anything you wanted to add on this discussion?
I just wanted to add that I think it is a good idea to consider expanding the uses beyond what would be considered the spine, South Orange Avenue and Sloan Street. I think a good example is the Third and Valley development that's going on right now. I think if the option was there for them to have office space in that building, I think it would be a better, a decent location for office space. And in fact, prior to that space, to that property being in the redevelopment zone, it was in the B3 zone, and that would have allowed industrial, you know, uses, as well as offices on the first floor. And I think because, because of its location, it's not in the center of town, but the ordinance is very limited, and, you know, you can have retail uses, I mean, there was a change for the live-work space, things like that. But I think office space in those locations are actually a true benefit because at lunchtime, they walk down to the village and get, you know, grab a bite to eat at one of the local restaurants, or they stop at the market and grab a gallon of milk before they go home, you know, things like that. And it would help, you know, bring more people into the downtown during the day, as opposed to, you know, you know, just at night, you know, and, you know, when trustee Rosner is, you know, downtown. But I think, I think expanding the uses, plus the, the type of uses change over time. You know, what, what's considered retail, what's considered office, what, you know, things are much different than they were when the master plan was first done, you know, 40 years ago, when everyone was done. So I think it's a good idea to look at expanding the type of uses, you know, outside South Orange Avenue and Sloan Street. I think it's important to maintain the retail because that at South Orange Avenue is the corridor and Sloan Street, you know, by the train station, you know, is a, is a good retail location in there. But once you go a block outside of those areas, I think you need to take a look at, you know, other uses.
Okay. Thank you, Sal. Any other discussion or questions before we, yes, Mike?
I have one question. Have, has anybody in, in the town, or Sal, or Susan, have you received any feedback from the downtown business development manager?
It's interesting. I recall at the last meeting, that was suggested, but I haven't. I don't know whether Sal has.
The Village Alliance came to the trustee meeting two months ago, I guess it was, and spoke out in favor of the, of the changes, allowing the business changes, as did the development committee.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments at this time? Okay. So is, I don't want to close too quickly. Is anyone planning on coming up? Okay. Please, well, if you wouldn't mind coming up, if that's okay? If you don't mind?
Just watch your step.
Good evening. John Rosley, 99th Avenue, Southern Jersey, Atlantic Health System. Most of you have seen, or a lot of you have seen my face over the last year and a half or so, different boards, different committees, I guess I'm on.
Is, is the microphone working?
It should be.
Okay. Okay. Please proceed.
So with that, I'd just like to say that we are Atlantic Health, and we are in a number of downtowns. A number of downtowns have changed their ordinances, have modified them. Times have changed, as your planner and engineer has told you. You know, the day of the internet is here. Most of us did holiday shopping probably and had UPS and FedEx and everybody else at our doorsteps. Moving the types of uses, like we're talking about, off your main spine, on your side streets, medical uses, family practice offices, wellness centers, we're going to be driving foot traffic, we're going to be keeping leakage.
Any member of the public who wishes to speak on the subject, please feel free to join us up at the podium here. If you could give us your name and address, and then feel free to make whatever remarks you'd like. Okay. So is, I, I don't want to close too quickly. Is anyone planning on coming up? Okay. Please, well, if you wouldn't mind coming up, if that's okay, if you don't mind.
Just watch your step. Good evening. John Rosellini, 99th Avenue, Southern Jersey, Atlantic Health System. Most of you have seen, or a lot of you have seen my face over the last year and a half or so. Different boards, different committees, I, I guess I'm on.
Is, is the microphone working?
Okay.
Okay. Please proceed.
So with that, I'd just like to say that we are Atlantic Health, and we are in a number of downtowns. A number of downtowns have changed their ordinances, have modified them. Times have changed, as your planner and engineer has told you. You know, the day of the internet is here. Most of us did holiday shopping probably and had UPS and FedEx and everybody else at our doorsteps. Moving the types of uses, like we're talking about, off your main spine on your side streets, medical uses, family practice offices, wellness centers, we're going to be driving foot traffic. We're going to be keeping leakage from leaving your downtown area and going to other communities. We're going to be bringing people throughout the course of the day, not just at lunchtime or not just at dinnertime. So we are a, I would call an addition to the fabric of a downtown community. We are not the fabric, but we're another piece of the puzzle. Right now, if you look around South Orange, most people are heading out towards West Orange, Milburn, some other town to have their medical care. They're probably stopping at the CVS, the Walgreens, or some other stores in those towns, or maybe even the Livingston Mall on their way back, or the Short Hills Mall. And they're not hitting your merchants, they're not hitting your restaurants, they're not hitting your food stores. So we feel that the use we're proposing on one of your side streets is a good use. It's currently being used in Summit, New Jersey. I think a lot of you have been told about that site and offered tours. It's being used in, Westfield is about to be used, and a number of other communities. So I'm very familiar with Burgess and Associates as planners. That's who I used to work with when I was in, on a planning board years ago. And in talking to them today, basically every single town that they're working with has either changed their downtown ordinances, their CBDs in the last few years, carved out areas, or they are doing that now. Because the whole world has changed. And medical use is not what it used to be, that's for sure. It's wellness now, it's health, and it's keeping you healthy, not just when you get sick to go there. And hopefully people come during the entire course of the day, and they are foot trafficking. So we're going to be providing probably, I don't know, on average, at least 80 people visiting our storefront every single day, if not more. And that's a lot of people walking through the downtown. That's not one rush at 12 noon, or it's not one rush at seven o'clock at night. That's a steady pace all during the course of the day. That'll hit your banks, hit a lot of other establishments in your community, and it helps, again. It's another vibrant piece of the puzzle, as you explained, as the experts over there before. I just want to confirm that's exactly what is happening in other communities. And I thank you for giving me time to talk to you tonight.
Would you mind if I asked you a quick question?
Absolutely.
For you. You, you talked about the amount of foot traffic that would be generated, and one of the discussions earlier, and you've talked about your experience in, in other areas that lead you to that conclusion. One of the questions that was raised earlier was this question about parking. I'm just sort of curious, in your experience, if you have any idea about what type of parking need is generated by the type of, and, and by the way, the other question that was generated was a question about the size of the wellness center in question. And I, I understand you're in discussions. Do you have any sense of what size wellness center you might be talking about?
Well, if you look at the size of your available retail spaces on your side streets off your spine in South Orange, that'll give you a clear indication. You're talking anywhere probably from 1,500 square feet to 3,000 square feet.
Okay.
In that range. This is no five-story, 20,000-square-foot, you know, gymnasium or anything like that. These are, you know. Now, when you talk about parking, it's very interesting. I was out in the township of Warren not too long ago, which probably has the strictest parking for medical use that's ever been heard. And they just have relaxed theirs dramatically because it has changed. So in the case of most of our sites, and I apologize, I don't know what your ratio is per thousand square feet right now for medical. But I will tell you, at any point in time, in this type of facility, we'd probably have two practitioners and probably four to six patients, if you want to call it visitors. Okay? People coming in for whatever it is that day. It might be a quick blood test in the morning on their way to work. They might be diabetic, whatever the issue is. And then three staff on top of that. So parking is really not a dramatic issue in this type of use. It's, again, it's not holding a class for 50 people for yoga at once, okay? It's that steady, smaller band of traffic all day long.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you. Anybody else? If you, if you don't mind.
If you wouldn't mind, if there's a follow-up. Do you find your traffic is coming by public transportation or by private automobile?
Combination.
Can you give me a ratio?
Well, in a case like this with a downtown location, okay, what we look at is we're looking at the livable units near the downtown train station. So a lot of your commuters would use a facility like this on their way to work, from work. They're going to be in your lots already. This is going to be a lot of your residents that are right there in the nearby area that are going to be walking. So that's really one of the keys to a downtown pod like this. When you look at the demographics, how many physicians are in the community right now, which is very limited in South Orange compared to other communities, as well as the population density. If you look at what you're building between Third, South Orange Avenue, Vos, and the quantity of apartments there and the statistics, it's, it's a desirable location. I won't deny that South Orange is a beautiful community. It really, really is, and you should be proud of the town you have, the village you have. I don't know what we call it this day, but that's, that's where I'm coming from with that.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
For taking the time. Again, this is a public hearing. Are there any other members of the public wishing to be heard on the subject? Okay. Again, if you could please come to the microphone, identify yourself by name, address, and...
Hello. Hi, my name is Michael Goldberg, 39 Mayhew Drive in South Orange. And I was a member of the Board of Trustees for six years, so from 2007 to 2013. So I thought it would be worthwhile to come and speak against the, this amendment to the Central Business District redevelopment plan. I've been watching these hearings over the past couple of months, and I thought it'd be worth sharing some of the history, because this dates back more than just 18 months. This is actually dates back, this particular issue, over three years, has been ongoing. I thought it would be worth sharing the history on a factual basis, and then you can make your judgment from there. So as you probably all know, the original redevelopment plan was adopted back in 1996, and that plan prohibited medical offices on the ground floor in order to foster a walkable downtown. However, it's my understanding that medical offices, wellness centers, the types of businesses that were just described are allowed today on upper floors. So this whole premise about generating traffic and generating people and people, and medical's changed, that all can happen today without changing the zoning. In addition, there's plenty of other business districts within South Orange. I believe they're called B2 districts, and forgive me, I'm certainly no zoning expert. But other areas in South Orange that allow medical on the ground floor outside of the core business district. Again, that's all available today. So this whole idea about people leaving town because there's no doctors in town, again, that doesn't resonate either. I think there's plenty of options. Anyway, just to reiterate some of the history here. So in 1999, the redevelopment plan was amended to allow medical on the ground floor on Taylor, Vos, and Scotland. Why, you know, I couldn't tell you. It didn't seem to make a whole lot of sense. It was a very discreet area. I have my conspiracy theories, but I won't get into that. But it, it wasn't done with a whole lot of rhyme or reason. So in 2008, the Board of Trustees, with myself as a member as well as others, with concurrence of the planning board, rescinded that amendment, since we felt it was contrary to the notion of a walkable downtown and a vibrant downtown that we were trying to achieve. That was ordinance 2008-20. So again, reiterating, 1999, it wasn't permitted on the ground floor. I'm sorry, 1996, it wasn't permitted. 1999, it was permitted. 2008, it, it was rescinded. And then we fast forward to the current, kind of where we are now. In 2011, the Board of Trustees was informed that the owner of the Avenue property wanted to rent their ground floor space on Vos Avenue to a doctor for medical office, despite it being prohibited by the zoning, and despite that building being approved by the planning board to have retail use on the ground floor. In 2012, specifically, the minutes are June 12, 2012, at a Board of Trustees meeting, there was a discussion item, and we were asked to vote on an ordinance, this exact ordinance that you're talking about now, two years later. And one of the, one of the representatives from the Avenue came forward saying that, and the minute, this is reflection of the minutes, June 12, 2012, quote, "Mr. Katz commented that his company drafted the proposed ordinance to allow the use of medical offices on the ground floor in the central business district redevelopment area." Again, that was staggering to the Board of Trustees that a property owner was drafting one of our ordinances. And it's, it was mind-boggling. And again, feel free to watch the video, read the minutes. It's all there on the record. And fortunately, the Board of Trustees did not take any action at that time. It was referred back to the Planning and Zoning Committee, June 20, 2012, the Planning and Zoning Committee. Again, the minutes are out there. The committee as a whole agreed that medical offices on the ground floor in that location were not appropriate or consistent with the zoning. And one of the representatives of the property, the Avenue, he was there, and the question was, you know, you know, why are you, do, why, what is, what is the angle here? What are you trying to accomplish? Has there been no interest in the property? And he said, "No, no, there's been plenty of interest." And he, he presented a three-page listing of merchants that inquired about the, the space. So again, another argument I've heard used over the past couple of months is, "Oh, we have to do this to fill our vacant spaces." There's been interest in the space. The landlord just didn't want to entertain that. Fast forward, October 1, 2012, they came back, representative of Overlook came back to the Planning and Zoning Committee, I believe it was Mr. Rosellini, although I'm not 100% certain. Again, we discussed it, and the committee, once again, agreed that medical offices were not appropriate at that time. So here we are. Fast forward now to 2014. So again, this was all happening in 2012. Honestly, I thought this was sort of a done deal. It went to the committee several times, went to the Board of Trustees, went nowhere. I was kind of surprised why this has even come up again. I sort of thought it was dead and buried. So just my closing comments, and I do appreciate you indulging me for so much time. So really, my comment is, as a result of the refusal of the owners to rent the property to any other interested tenant, and the persistence of Overlook to only consider that single property, this board is about to consider supporting an amendment to the Central Business District redevelopment plan and change the zoning. While we all agree there can be reasons to alter zoning, it should, it should be, it's something that should be done with forethought, analysis, and care. It shouldn't simply be done because one particular merchant or potential tenant lobbied for it. That just doesn't make sense to me. There's, there's a, there's a derogatory term to describe that type of zoning, which I will not use. But I just, I just think it sets a terrible precedent, and I think it, then it sends a signal to other property owners. You know, Mr. Ayuso, who's building the Gateway Project, the developers of Third and Valley, they're all going to hear these, and, you know, if this is approved, see this message, get this message, and it's going to send a signal to them that, okay, if you lobby hard enough, you know, you can change the zoning. I just think it's a terrible precedent for both for the village, as well as other property owners and business owners. And I hope you will send a recommendation to the Board of Trustees to not support this. I thank you for your time, your service, and for your time. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay. I'm assuming. Does anybody have any questions, or? No? Okay. Thank you. This is still an open public hearing, and still taking any comments or questions from the audience.
Thank you. My name is Douglas Newman. I'm a 25-year resident of South Orange, and I served as a Class 1 member of the Planning Board for four years from 2007 to 2011. I'm speaking this evening to ask you to recommend to the Board of Trustees that they not proceed with certain elements of this amendment to the redevelopment plan, specifically the elements of the changes that pertain to some of the uses that have been specified and some of the parking considerations that are put forth in this draft. I do want to say from the outset that some of the information that's been conveyed this evening is frankly not accurate. This proposed set of uses, specifically as it pertained to the downtown business district, are completely juxtaposed, completely at odds, diametrically opposite of what the downtown vision plan expressed. I'm actually surprised that the statement was made, both in a prior meeting and this meeting, that they're consistent with that plan. I would urge you to look at that. The plan made is a core element, specifically building retail on Vos Avenue and building double-loading Vos Avenue to build on what was going on with respect to the Avenue. That would be the site that is behind the side of the blockbuster site to Taylor Street. As an aside, the owner of that site, the entire corner there, one single owner, the two houses, the parking lot, and the old grunnings factory, which is now used by a fitness center, you know, has always expressed a desire to develop that site. So in making this change to Vos Avenue, not only would it have direct impact on the Avenue project, but it would foreclose or preclude any likelihood of there being retail on the other side of that street when that property is developed. I also want to bring your attention to what I think is a bit of window dressing in this proposed change. There are three miniature districts within the downtown that are included. One borders on being nonsensical or almost insulting. It's on Church Street. If you actually look at the map, the area that's included in this office overlay on Church Street is the New Jersey Transit parking lot. And it's the rear section of the Renaissance Plaza redevelopment owned by Said Nagim. This planning board approved the redevelopment of Church Street and West-South Orange Avenue for a mixed-use project comprised of retail on the ground floor and parking in the rear. The first lot in this proposed change is the parking lot of that development that this planning board approved. The second lot going south on Church Street is the Transit Parking Lot. It amounts to a meaningless suggestion. I don't understand why you would consider changing the redevelopment plan to rezone two parking lots, one proposed and one established. The other spot that's included in this redevelopment is, of course, the Avenue. There's a single beneficiary to that, and that's Atlantic Healthcare and Overlook Hospital and the owner, former owner Sterling, which I'll get to in a moment. And the third is the area that wraps around the corner I just described and includes the Cal Iverson property that's on Scotland Avenue. That is very much a prime retail zone as well as a prime thoroughfare. It's hardly secondary, tertiary to our town. The traffic on Scotland Avenue and Vos, and Valley Street is extraordinary. It is the primary nexus between Interstate 78 and Interstate 280. One only need to stand there or watch our wonderful traffic control officer, Butch Larson, control traffic as it traverses Scotland and Valley, right past that entire retail strip that would also be changed. I also want to highlight that the proposed change, while much is being made about doctors' offices and wellness centers, that's not the way this was written. This zoning change would let all commercial uses, all, all commercial uses that now exist on the second floor, doctors' offices, lawyers' offices, accounting offices, consulting firms, design firms, bail bondsmen, you name it, any commercial use that is now restricted to the second floor and to office buildings would now become a permitted use in a retail space. I frankly and respectfully disagree with both the village's zoning officer and the village's planner. Successful downtowns do not revert their retail space to commercial uses. If you look at Walnut Street in South Orange, it was a, I'm sorry, in Montclair, Walnut Street in Montclair was a tertiary street. Because of the success of Montclair's downtown, it's now overflowing with retail uses. Those uses when downtowns succeed push their way into those secondary and tertiary streets. No developer, and I sat with the developers, the Avenue developers, I've sat with Mr. BIFAS, I sat with Edward Ayuso, who's now developing site. No developer willingly puts retail in a mixed-use space. They do it for one reason only, because the town mandates it as a quid pro quo for other concessions and tax abatements and pilots. They do it because the town wants a walkable downtown. They want a thriving, walkable community. They don't want Venetian blinds, they don't want curtains, they don't want an office. Nobody goes to a doctor's office to be sitting in a retail storefront. All of it will be covered. If you want to visualize a commercial space in our downtown, look at the Eagle Talent Agency next to Lee's Cleaner across from the Exxon on West-South, South Orange Avenue. Commercial use, it's a, it's a, it's a booking agent for talent. The windows are closed. Look at Suburban Learning Center on Village Plaza. It's a medically-related use or an education-related use. Venetian blinds, closed up. That's what happens when offices go into retail spaces. One other point about the downtown vision plan and the comments made about the project at Third and Valley, which I believe is supposed to have retail. It was defined as a key gateway into our village. It was defined in the vision plan to have retail on the first floor, to be a prominent gateway as people come north into the village from Maplewood and from Union and from Hillside and from Springfield, that the first thing that they would see is this spectacular project that the Board of Trustees has approved for that site. It would be a horrible step backwards if the first floor of Third and Valley Street Development became offices. I just, I just think it would be just a horrible step in the wrong direction. I want to make one last comment. I filed a Open Public Record Act request in February, two actually, and one in early April or March, to understand where was this coming from in light of the history that Mr. Goldberg just described to you. Because I was sort of dumbfounded that this is, you know, sort of come back again, and where did this come from? And I received over a thousand pages of correspondence, a lot of it not relevant, such as the perils of computer-based searches. But with respect to inquiries made by the public about this, 100% of them, 100% of them, were communications from John Rosellini representing Overlook Hospital, Atlantic Healthcare, and Steve Katz, one of the principals of the Avenue, Sterling Properties. What's most remarkable about Mr. Katz's inquiries, and I'm talking about weekly, monthly, where are we? Where's our ordinance? When's the ordinance coming up? When is the ordinance being reviewed? Can we pay for a special meeting with the planner? Can we write the ordinance? Can we do this? What can we do to move this along? Every single one of them, and I just brought pages of them, but I'm not going to bore you with reading them. It is nothing short of extraordinary, the level of lobbying that's gone on by one property owner and one potential tenant, okay? What's most remarkable, and I cannot even fathom what's going on here, is that Mr. Katz and Sterling Properties continued to lobby the village as recently, from what I received, as January or even March of this year, one year after they sold the property. as January or even March of this year, one year after they sold the property. I do not understand what's going on here, I don't even want to imagine what's going on here, but it's unfathomable to me that the owner of a development that was sold, sold in February of 2013, continues to lobby the village to make this change occur today. There are no beneficiaries on Church Street, there are no beneficiaries because there's no crying need coming from Scotland Road. The empty lot, parking lot on, on the other side of Vose Avenue is not coming from there, it's coming from a single tenant and a single property owner. That's what you're contemplating tonight. So all the things about affordable housing are all well and fine, all the things about environmental standards are all well and fine, I'm not going to even get into them, there may be a lot of substance and merit there. But on this issue, one last point, is this wellness center, please read the definition. It is limited to a wellness center owned by a hospital. I can't imagine a more restrictive form of trade. Why I went through every definition in this amendment, there is not a single limitation on a single definition as to who the sponsor should be of the use, except for wellness centers. And it says wellness centers which are owned by hospitals. So if three doctors that are independent of a hospital like St. Barnabas or Atlantic Healthcare want to come forward and do this, they're prohibited. That's what you'd be considering. And on the parking, I'm kind of surprised that the planner didn't know what it is. This parking has been dramatically changed for this purpose, okay? The parking for retail, and Sal Rendick can describe it, is dramatically different than what's permitted here. Medical office normally in the past would require one parking space per employee. Mr. Rosellini has just described that there will be two physicians or practitioners, three staff, that's five, and, you know, six or so patients, okay? You're already up to 11 simultaneous users. This is 1,500 square foot space, under what I understand this to be, it will be six spaces. That location was parking constrained from the beginning. The number of concessions that the village made to support that development are extraordinary. The record will show. Decisions were made to limit the amount of parking to make that development happen, not once, when it first was built, but again when above was built, okay? So you're talking about large demand on parking and a reduction of the parking requirement. And Sal Rendick can describe what the parking normally is for a medical office, but my recollection is this one per employee under normal circumstances. So, and there's other measures as well. So that's my comment, and I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you. This is still an open public hearing. Are there any other questions or comments from members of the public? Ken, if you could please give your name and address, that would be appreciated.
My name's Dr. Hugh Snyder, a South Orange resident for about eight years, and I'm one of the doctors who wants to go into this space on Vose Avenue. It was my practice's idea to try to set up an office in South Orange before we had a relationship with Atlantic Health System that's born out of this continued mission, and the fact that this keeps coming up is because of me. I keep persisting. And when I speak to my neighbors, especially those that are patients, and they say, what's going on with your office? I thought you were going to have an office in South Orange. I say, I'm trying, but it's been very difficult. And, and it's really through John Rosellini's encouragement that I've not given up. I think it would be good for South Orange, and I brought a list I wanted to share with the group who has to consider this. This is something you could pass down.
I'm sorry, what is it? Before you hand that over as a list of...
This is a list that I quickly generated in my office of the zip codes of, of the patient visits that, that have come through my office. So the first zip code is the one that the most visits in the past five years have been from. And the point I wanted to make is that this is an office in South Orange, and the people coming to my office are coming from all of these zip codes, not just one, it's not just a local phenomenon that people are coming to our office in Summit. And my intention of setting up an office in South Orange is that these people from these other zip codes will now be coming to South Orange. The eighth busiest zip code coming to my office in Summit is the zip code for South Orange. These are my neighbors who drive out of South Orange for a doctor's appointment, and what I'm trying to do is put an office in South Orange so that they stay here. And the first page has 30 zip codes, it's one of 19 pages of zip codes that have visited my office in Summit in the past five years. So the potential for drawing foot traffic into our town is very real, it's not an imagined consequence of, of having this specific office, not theoretical office. If this is passed, my practice with these visits will have a satellite office set up here in South Orange. And the reason I'm doing this is because I think it's going to be good for the town. I, I feel like this is a gift we can give. People buy locally, and there's very few services that they'll cross a boundary and leave their zip code to go to, but a doctor's office and I think a haircut are two of those services. There's a supermarket in most downtowns, there's an ice cream shop, there's a diner. People stay within their town, except for very certain draws that take them to another town. And the reason I brought this list was to demonstrate that this is a business that draws people from other zip codes. And I think South Orange would like to have a business that draws people into South Orange from other zip codes.
Jenny, you can circulate the list. I'm sorry, I just wanted to know what it was first.
It's...
Was there, is there anything else you want to add to your comments?
No, I really want to thank you all for serving. I mean, this has been an incredible education to me because public decision-making is not a part of my training, and I can't believe the amount of time that you volunteers are giving to the town. And this is all I have to give.
Thank you. Would you mind if I asked you a question? I...
I'd be happy to try to answer.
Because some of the things that I've been listening to, and I'm trying to learn enough to be able to, to give an informed vote at the appropriate time, I've heard, I heard two comments about, from previous speakers, and I'm not trying to quote anybody, so, but one of, it was about location of offices, and I guess the implication that I took away from the comments was that there is plenty of other space that's available for offices. I heard about second-floor space, and I heard about first-floor, within the central business district, and I heard about first-floor space in areas other than the central business district. And I'm, you've obviously spent a lot of time, and I'm thinking there must be some reason why those things haven't appealed to you. Can you comment a little bit on that?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Michael Goldberg sort of reviewed the first time that I came to the committee. He was on it, as was Trustee Gould, who was serving at the time, who, who as you may know is a Realtor. And they were both very warm and welcoming to the idea of my practice setting up an office here, and just, just not in the zone, areas that are not zoned for medical. I had already been looking for a space for about a year, and for them to say, have you looked at any other spaces? I sort of said, yeah, there, there's just not a lot of spaces. And Trustee Gould said, well, you know, I'm a Realtor, let me, let me help you. And that didn't yield any either. The, the reason is that I've observed as a, as a doctor looking for an appropriate space is, we need to have a handicap-accessible space. So that's the draw of the ground floor. Additionally, many of the buildings in South Orange are zoned to not be too tall, and as a result, don't have elevators. I think you have to, if you're four stories high, you have to have an elevator, and if you're smaller than that, you don't have to. So to have a second-story office in a building with only stairs to get to that second story is, is a non-starter. The people say, what about the PNC building? That's giant. The landlord there does not want medical in there, I won't get into the details, but they've offered up a variety of obstacles, which we offered to share, the expense of correcting, to no avail. There is another space around the corner from where the Town Hall Deli is, it's this big orthopedics practice sign there, space for rent, no one calls back when you call those numbers. Trustee Gould and I both had the same experience and sort of threw our hands up. So, you know, for the functionality of a, of a doctor's office, to have handicapped access, it greatly limits what you can choose, and then just walking south, John Rosellini and I walked South Orange, looking in the windows of the places for rent, could we get it here? Could this place work? Some of these buildings are like old houses that were converted, there'll be thousands of dollars of vaccines in a refrigerator there. If the power goes out, that's not acceptable. So, you know, one of the nice things about the Vose Avenue site is it's brand-new construction. It's reliable, and we have a landlord who is very enthusiastic about it. I called about a ground-level space where the landlord was very gruff about my questions, and I thought to myself, if I can't even make a meeting to look at the space with this landlord, is this someone who I want to have be the person on the other end of the phone when the power is flickering and I have expensive vaccines to keep cold? So we didn't arrive here at random. I mean, I tried, and literally, I mean, Trustee Goldberg reviewed how much time it's been going on, but I'm persisting because I really think it's a good idea for the town. It's something that I would put elsewhere if there was a reasonable location. And when we first started being told it's not appropriate for that setting, and people were saying, well, there's going to be a building on Third Street, it can go there. Ground wasn't even broken yet. I thought, well, I hope I have an office before that building's done, and as it's getting closer, we're starting to hear that that's not really a desired location either. So that's where, that's how we came to be having this conversation.
Okay. Thank you. Is any other member of the board, any?
Just one question, you had mentioned handicap accessibility. Can, how many, parking's a big issue. So do you foresee, how many handicap parking spaces do you foresee being needed on a regular basis?
I don't, I mean, the, the site would, would end up having to be evaluated for that, it's not anywhere near what my training is about. The handicap patients that we usually take care of are dropped off by an ambulant, which leaves, that it's, we don't have, just the way the practice mostly runs, there's just not a lot of handicapped people who are driving their own car that they park in a handicap space, other than people who can ambulate their, you know, into the office from a nearby parking space. I'm sure there will be required spaces, but like the truly wheelchair-bound, which we see, require a special lift truck, which would be a drop-off pickup kind of relationship. So that's a great question, and I don't know if John knows. That would be...
Yeah. My other question is, why are we calling it a wellness center? I mean, it sounds like it's a doctor's office, and I've, I've done a lot of healthcare design in the past, and, and sometimes terms are used to, you know, to, to kind of like, be a little kind of translucent versus transparent. So I'm just, I'm really curious, as why are you calling it a health center, I mean, a wellness center, when it sounds like a doctor's office?
Well, that's sort of part of the effect that Atlantic Health has had. They've been promoting the concept of wellness centers in a downtown area as part of a sort of a new initiative in healthcare, which is not to just reimburse the sick at the most expensive end of their illness, but rather to be available and provide more accessible primary and preventive care. That is so complicated, it completely exceeds the time limits, if not the setting, to discuss what that really means, but, but, you know, the reason that that's being put forth is Atlantic Health Systems, in the process of acquiring practices like mine, is trying to make health and preventive services available in places that are convenient for patients to reduce the obstacles that prevent people from doing their follow-up appointments. The idea that a patient will swing by this office, get their finger stick checked or their blood pressure checked before they go on the train, would probably be an improvement. That would probably be a visit that a patient would never have. And so that's a hospital initiative to provide wellness and preventive services within communities. Summit has it, Westfield has it, it's being, it's a drive that's coming from Atlantic Health System. You know, that was how I partnered with them. I wanted to have a doctor's office in town, they wanted to have a wellness center in town. The purpose is the same, the linguistics is depending on whose agenda you're reading. But I'm a primary care doctor, my job is wellness, so if you think it's a doctor's office and not a wellness center, you know, tomato, tomato.
I just, I mean, just, I'm just trying to find out from your perspective, you know, it sounds like there, that, I can't, you know, how is your, so you feel that this is a wellness center, it's not a primary care center or a primary care office?
Well, it depends how the space is approved, I guess. There is a potential that this sort of, some of the things that are available in the other wellness centers, which involves complementary medicine services that I don't personally provide to my patients, will be incorporated into the space. It's my understanding that that was something that was, that made it more desirable, and if the board prefers that, that can be provided there. If you guys come back and say, we'd really just rather have, you know, a shingle-up doctor's office, that piece is, is, is a part of it. The wellness center is sort of a more modern thing to have in a downtown, and that's why a storefront, you know, makes it more convenient, that it's available as you're taking care of other health, I mean, other shopping needs. And so I think that's where that, that language comes out of sort of hospital speak, truthfully, but it's an initiative that, that's, you could, you could Google it, and you'll see wellness centers and what they're trying to achieve in terms of not sitting back at the hospital waiting for the ER visits, going out to begin, communities to make people better, but that's a whole nother initiative.
Okay. Anything else? Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your time.
Again, we, we are having an open public hearing. Are there any other comments, members of the public? Okay. If, I'm sorry. Please reintroduce yourself anyway.
Again, my name is Douglas Newman, South Orange resident. I just wanted to react to two things that I heard, because I'm frankly a little confused, and you may be as well. One is Mr. Rosellini said that the vast majority of patients are already there, they're in the downtown housing, they're, they're going to and from the train, and they would hope to draw heavily from that complement. And then I heard Dr. Snyder, very interesting that he draws patients from all over, but this will simply be a satellite office. So I would reasonably conclude that those patients who find his current office, which I think is near, either in or near Overlook Hospital in Summit, would continue to go there, and the, and the patients that would be attracted here are the ones that are most proximate to this location. So that was one thing I just found a little bit confusing. It's actually very logical to me that people would seek out the closest office they could find. So I'm not quite sure where the big surge in incremental visits are. The other thing is, we have a lot of doctors. I was, I didn't have the time, but I was going to sort of put together a census of all the doctors we have in town, including, you know, the eye care center on Second Street or Third Street. I, you know, the draw is a tremendous volume. They do surgery and eye procedures, there's a whole building dedicated to caring for people who have serious eye conditions, cataracts, glaucoma, and the like. And people come by, you know, the scores into our town to use that facility, some ambulatory, some not, some with ambulance service, some of their own means. We have doctors, pediatric practices, in the old school building on First Street, we have doctor's offices on South Orange Avenue, most of them are on the first floor. Most of them don't have elevator access, because that's just the nature of the, the building stock in our town. It's old, it doesn't have elevators, it's not so much the height of it, it's just the age of it. And we've never in this town, to the best of my knowledge, had any problem accommodating doctors. Is there an opportunity to create a medical arts zone in this town? I believe there is. In fact, it was talked about in the vision plan. In the downtown vision plan, there's a discussion of specific neighborhoods that would be conducive to medical arts. If you look at Milburn and Milburn Avenue, you'll see a whole string of medical arts buildings filled with doctors, first, second, third, and fourth floor. You know, doctors do like to congregate for a whole lot of reasons, they refer patients to specialists and back and forth, the facilities that pick up the labs, you know, all come to the same building. Sometimes they're next to a hospital, like you see surrounding St. Barnabas and Mars Town Hospital and Overlook Hospital, but sometimes they just congregate where towns have zoned for medical arts. I think those are noble objectives. I think it's great, you know, to have medical, but this, as proposed, is far bigger than that. This is allowing everything that's accessible to the second floor dropping down to first floor retail, including this large undeveloped tract that's, you know, up for grabs on the corner of Vose Avenue and Taylor Place. So, thanks.
Okay. Thank you. I think we've heard from pretty much everybody in the audience by now, at least once. I will ask one more time. I will ask one more time. And with that, I'm gonna close the public hearing and now I'm gonna open it for discussion to the members of this board.
I mean, I have questions too, but go ahead.
Yeah, I know you're doing probably some of the same. I'll ask the question. A valid point, an interesting point was raised in, in the public discussion, hospital-sponsored center. Is there a particular reason why that was specifically singled out in the proposed ordinance?
We did, we did significant research in how other communities were addressing wellness centers as, as defined and the sense was is you could, you could slip a lot of other uses that could be part of a wellness center in a broad definition, but that there was some control if it was sponsored by a hospital. It was, it was more defined and you wouldn't, you, a wellness center could be considered without a hospital sponsor. We, we, we got the sense from our research that you could get other uses that wouldn't be quite as complimentary to the concept of wellness center. So, based upon that and based upon research and looking at how other communities handled it and the, where there are ones and how they functioned, it seemed like the idea of having it hospital-sponsored made the most sense.
Well, for, for argument's sake, just as a follow-up, Summit, which has one.
Yes.
Is that a specifically named hospital-sponsored zone?
As I recall, it is. I don't have my research in front of me, but most of the ones that we looked at did have that.
Which communities did you look at specifically?
I, I can get that for you, but I don't have it right, right in front of me.
I'm just curious to know whether it was similar.
There were several in Bergen County. I know that, but I don't recall all of them.
Just, just one question. I mean, this is, just to understand the history, without having to change, without creating an ordinance that would allow any, because there is, I've got, I'm conflicted here, right? Part of it is that it sounds reasonable to allow someone to have a space and at the same time, creating an ordinance that then opens a door for anything seems to have, does be a little bit of a Pandora's Box that, I mean, couldn't someone go for a variance so that the ordinance stays, so that the way it stays in place, that you could allow case by case?
No. In, in, under a redevelopment plan, uses that are not permitted in the redevelopment plan must go for a plan amendment. They cannot be addressed through the zoning board. That's the way it's structured, because it was felt that, and the, the concept of that is that the municipality has really targeted efforts in a redevelopment area and it's really a policy legislative type of decision as to what's considered to be major deviations. So, any devariance that would trigger a zoning board application can't be heard. It has to go to the, it has to go to the, the Board of Trustees for plan amendment.
Okay.
One of the questions that was raised concerned the areas that are identified in the commercial overlay and I have to admit, it did strike me that the area on Church Street, you know, I remember when we dealt with the Renaissance Plaza project, that seems very unlikely to, have need for such an overlay. It, it does, I mean, it does seem that this, that there are really only, you know, two areas, not that they're insignificant, but one which is owned by one property owner, the other which is, which apparently has a few different owners. But, I'm just sort of curious if, I mean, the Central Business District is what it is, so you couldn't, you know, you're not gonna choose things to overlay in something that's not in the district. And this doesn't propose to change the district, but I'm just sort of curious how these, and maybe this is a question better directed to the members of the board who are, the Board of Trustees who are here this evening, but I, I'm just sort of curious if somebody can elaborate a little bit on how these particular sites were identified for the, because there are, there are others that fall off of South Orange Avenue. They're not all, you know, these two definitely, or three are definitely off South Orange Avenue, but there are others that are also off of South Orange Avenue that are not identified here. And I'm just wondering why these particular areas, these three areas were identified as this commercial, in this commercial overlay, but others were not. And I'm just wondering if somebody could.
The prime, the prime retail space was considered South Orange Avenue, Sloan Street and Village Plaza and those areas were deemed to be left alone and that probably takes up the majority of the businesses, you know, retail spaces that are available. And the streets that were having trouble were Vose and parts of Valley Street and that was the concern, the main concern. Okay? I'm not sure of the logic for Church Street myself, but.
If I may respond from a technical perspective?
Please.
Okay. The, the concept of overlay, the, and the distinction was if it didn't front on Sloan Street or South Orange Avenue. And I, we, we looked at the ownership on Church. I know that. I know what that is, but it is not, those parcels are not fronting on South Orange Avenue. So, any parcel that fronted on South Orange Avenue, had any frontage on South Orange Avenue or Sloan Street, okay, those were in the overlay. And I'm not sure that there's any that isn't in that category. So, if we missed one, I'll be, and that should be remedied, but the intent was any frontage lot on South Orange Avenue or Sloan Street was not in the overlay. That was continued to have retail, first floor retail. It was only those parcels and we were very careful about looking at the parcel base to make sure that no lots, you'll see that the lots are identified, that it's only those that do not front on Sloan Street and South Orange Avenue.
Okay. Other discussion, comments, questions, thoughts?
Well, I believe, and Patrick or Susan, if you can correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe that our charge is that we are supposed to opine and, and give guidance then, I guess, perhaps through a resolution, to the Board of Trustees as to whether or not the proposed changes to the redevelopment plan are consistent or inconsistent with the master plan. That is, that is minimally what we're supposed to do. Is that correct?
That's correct and the board also has the authority to make suggestive changes if it sees fit.
Okay. So, having said that, I am open to entertaining a motion of some sort. Before I was chair, I used to, and make the motions, but I'm trying not to make the motions, not being the chair. So, I'll certainly entertain somebody wanting to say something on the subject. And I guess I will have to make a motion. Okay. So, one way or the other, the, the board has to, to vote, either a vote up or down. I, so I'm just gonna introduce a very simple resolution that the proposed redevelopment plan is consistent with the master plan and that would require a second.
A second?
Okay. So, I have a second from Adam or Michael. You can choose. So, Jada, I, I think it's appropriate to take the roll, please.
Okay. Mr. Coulter-Max?
I'm gonna, I'm gonna pass for the moment, actually. Can you come back to me, please? I'm still thinking it over.
Mr. Lerner?
Yes.
Mr. Rosner?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mrs. Torpe?
Yes.
Mr. Chambers?
I don't know. I'm conflicted over this. This doesn't seem so simple. Now, I guess I can abstain.
And Ms. Harris?
Yes.
And Mr. Coulter-Max?
The abstention counts as a no vote, I believe, for the purposes, but for, for all intents and purposes, there were sufficient affirmative votes, there being one abstention. So, by, what was, what was that, six? What's the count here? One, two, three. For, for a six to zero to one vote, the motion, the resolution is adopted and so the, who, I guess, Jada, you'll, can, you'll pass this along to the board, just in case the two members of the board who are here don't, don't pass it along themselves. Michael, go ahead, please. Hold on. Let me give you.
Ms. Grue, I previously sent you some comments and wording and language and terminology. Have they been incorporated and, and sent over in the ordinance to the board?
No, I think that we had discussed some of those and I think most of those were questions. Certainly, some of those, if you would like those other to be.
Well, again, some of them dealt with getting rid of the old terminology such as the Biffet site and the Shop Right site and, you know, starting to put it back into context of today's world. And they weren't questions, those were comments. And I would hope that if you were gonna clean this ordinance up, or if we're gonna clean this up, that we clean up the language in there that refers to the proper sighting.
Certainly, we'll make sure that those are incorporated.
Any other, any other comments before we move on?
Yeah. I am, I'd actually, the last meeting, I said that I would have, from the Environmental Commission, some suggestions for the, for the master plan. I did submit those and I'm not sure if they went out yet or not.
They went out. We got them. I was gonna forward it to the, when we do the master plan examination, we'll, we'll actually invite the Environmental Commission or representative to come to the meetings as well, someone from this board and we'll, I think that the RFP is out already right now for that, so we're waiting for that and we'll take it from there.
Yeah, it's just, it was basically four suggestions to be more specific about things like.
Sal had many comments for you though.
Okay.
That's it.
Neil, I'm sorry. Neil, do we, it was, did you have anything else to add as we wanna move on?
Those, I mean, you know, when you get a chance, take a look, because it's, we're just trying to be specific about things like bikes, storm water, light pollution. I forget the last.
I, I, and I did, I did see that earlier today. Appreciate your taking the time to pass it along. I, I certainly should have mentioned that at some point earlier and, and thank you. And, and I think we have our volunteer later when we get to the discussion about the Environmental Commission. I'm guessing we have our volunteer liaison, would be my guess. So, so going back in the order of the, the agenda, I actually need to cede the stage to Michael for the approval of the resolution, as I am conflicted on that matter, so I will step down to let Michael handle the resolution.
You all have a, a resolution in, in front, prepared by counsel. Is there any questions on the resolution? If not, I'll entertain a, a motion to approve the resolution.
I'll move.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Jada, can you call the roll?
This is the resolution we just voted?
Mr. Chambers?
It's the same one.
Neil?
So, I was, I was just, I was just making sure that this, so we're revoting.
Yeah, she just called your name to vote.
Again.
This is the formal vote. The last time we saw it was just to vote to get the okay to do the formal resolution.
Got it, got it, got it. Okay. Yes.
Ms. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Lerner?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Rosner?
Yes.
Welcome back.
Your timing is impeccable.
I have to say that the problem with going down there is that I can smell the popcorn. I was very tempted to leave. So, moving on, next item is the application to be heard for completeness, case number 236, Papillon 25 Restaurant LLC, block 1906, lot 6, 24 First Street, minor site plan. The applicant is proposing to operate the property as a restaurant and sports bar. We did, we did, of course, receive the application. I don't see a representative from the applicant here this evening. So, certainly, we can consider this for completeness. I just wanted to know if there was any communication that indicated that they did not wish to be heard this evening or anything along those lines? Okay. So, Jada, so having, so if that's not the case, we'll, we'll proceed. I believe, Susan, that you did prepare a analysis of this and if you might advise us, please.
Certainly. And again, this is purely for completeness checklist matter, not on the merits of the application at all. That comes after, as the board knows. So, based upon reviewing the, the submission in relationship to the township checklist ordinance, there were a number of items that they did not meet. What I would consider to be the substantial one is that there was no survey with the location of the building on the site, so it was very difficult to put it in context and something that, that is not only a matter of your checklist, but also is something that for you to evaluate the application. For example, without that, you can't tell whether there may be intrusion onto an adjacent lot or what the setbacks are or whatever in your analysis. Again, I'm not suggesting that it goes to the merits of the application, but just in terms of what you would need it for, for your review. So, there's a list. Again, it really goes to what would be on a plan or the survey that could be identified and also what is not there is any elevation drawings showing the Valley Street facade and some minor details on, on storage and waste recycling and lighting. But, the key is the, is the survey plan.
Mr. Chair, the applicant did call me over the, on Sunday. I went over the list with him. I said there was really nothing major on here. I said all of it could be gotten within a couple of days, that they should call Ms. Grue and Mr. Renda, just to go over it and to get them to survey the block and lot number. I didn't, wasn't quite sure why we needed the Valley Street elevation, since they're only asking about the First Street facade, but I said to, to talk to them and I said, "You have to get everything in this week if you wanna be heard next month." So, it's up to them.
Do it. But, they didn't do it.
No, this is, I, no, I spoke to him Sunday. I said, "You have to get them this week, so the week's not over."
The only way they would be heard next month is if the board deemed them conditionally complete, as opposed to incomplete. It's, and. It's a bit, it's a bit, I mean, there are a number of items here, which in my estimation are fairly basic items, which are a part of, I mean, the notion that the certified list of property owners wasn't submitted and no public hearing notified, I mean, those are types of things that I have a basic expectation personally. I mean, I won't speak for any other board member, but I, it's.
complete, as opposed to incomplete.
It's a bit, I mean, there are a number of items here, which, in my estimation, are fairly basic items, which are a part of, I mean, the notion that the certified list of property owners wasn't submitted, and no public hearing noted. I mean, those are types of things that I have a basic expectation personally. I mean, I won't speak for any other board member, but it's pretty rare that this kind of stuff is not included, and we deem it complete. So, I mean, I, I'll leave it at that. I won't beat a dead horse. So, if nobody else has a...
Mr. Chairman, if they're on notice, and if they do supply all those documents at least 10 days in advance, and if the board wanted to, it could, at the next meeting, say, "All right, you've supplied everything from the memo. We think that you're deemed complete. We have enough information to start," and start the meeting if they wanted to, depending on how busy the agenda is.
This is, you know, we decided, if my recollection serves correctly, that we were going to divide this up. And there would be a hearing for completeness one month, and there would be a hearing, specifically because we would have these jumbled meetings where we were trying to figure out, did it mean, we were tying ourselves in knots in order to try to do that, us, the professionals. And I'm just, you know, I think it's, I do not think it is unreasonable to expect that an applicant can read through this, work with the professionals. There are some times, and there are clearly items in here, which, you know, Susan, and I know Sal, and I know Sal in the past, have said, "You know, they're not in here, but it's okay. They're not needed for this, so they can be given at a later date." And so, there's, but this is, this is more incomplete than that. And while I recognize we have the authority to do that, as much, you know, to deem it conditionally complete, or what have you, I personally am not in favor of it. But I'm willing to entertain any motion the board member wishes to raise, and we can vote on it accordingly. If people feel otherwise, then it's...
Just a clarification. If the board would determine that the application is incomplete, then the applicant would not be able to be deemed complete and be heard at the next meeting, because I don't think they wouldn't have the opportunity to do their advertisements and send out their notices for that meeting.
I mean, if they're represented, they might notice in ahead of time. They're represented.
Then I would recommend that if the board is considering hearing them for completeness again, and possibly hearing them at the next meeting, that they be conditionally complete with the provision that they provide all of this information.
The only issue I have, this came up before the planning board, I think, a year or two ago, and at that point, or three years ago, and the decision was made that at least the basic information should really be provided, or we should not deem the application complete. I don't really want to hold this thing up, but I mean, this is such basic information that whoever prepared all of this should have at least had the courtesy to call somebody and discuss it, or even be here this evening if it meant that much to them. But they're not.
I don't think they were aware that they were on the agenda tonight. That's my...
I'm sorry, what?
My gut feeling is, I don't think they were aware that they had to come here tonight for this. I think, I just don't get that sense from them. I told them to call the planner and the engineer this week. I said, "I didn't see anything on here that was major to get." I said, "We did get the basic plans, but it's just from their perspective, it's just a facade improvement, and I'm not quite sure." I just think he's new to the process, the applicant. Never mind, the attorney and the architect should have known better. That I won't argue. I just don't want to penalize the applicant, because time is money on these things.
No, I agree with you, but if they didn't think they were going to be on the agenda for tonight, and they couldn't be heard for completeness tonight anyway.
I don't know if anybody had told them, so...
Mr. Renda, have you had any discussions with this?
But I think he did come into Village Hall today.
I believe, one of the owners did come in to Village Hall today, but I wasn't in at that time, so I didn't discuss it with them. And I'm not sure what they're looking, and there's been a couple of phone calls, and there's been a, the other owner has come in a few times, basically trying to nail down the application fees and the information for the attorney, you know, the basic stuff, but nothing that I'm aware of to address the comments that were in this report.
Were these comments, by the way, provided to the owner? Yes? Okay. Give or take when? I mean...
I sent it to them, I think, Friday.
Okay. All right. Okay. I'm open to taking a motion from somebody as to whether or not this should be deemed conditionally complete, or incomplete, or...
Just a point of inquiry. Conditionally complete, when we could give a date when all of these things need to be, like if we say this stuff, material must be in by Friday? Or, I mean, is that reasonable?
MLU requires that prior to the first hearing day, material must be on file 10 days in advance.
You got to talk closer.
A minimum of 10 days in advance. But I think the board can establish a little bit more time to give the board a chance to review this stuff, and have a little more time to, and for the professionals to have a little more time to review it.
I think one week from today, you know, one week from, give it to the next Monday to get everything in conditionally complete. Because I didn't see anything on this list that should preclude them from not getting everything by Monday. It all seemed pretty basic.
I'll move the application for completeness, subject to all material that is missing and deemed necessary be submitted by a week from tonight.
And just as a question, that would include all of the items identified in the memo from Susan Gruel dated April 30, 2014?
Absolutely.
Second? Okay, we have a second. So, Jada, if you call the roll, please.
Just a point of question. A week from tonight would be Sunday night. So, they'd have to have it in by Friday.
By following next Monday. Let me clarify it.
Okay. Just want to make sure.
I'll second.
Might I suggest 4:30?
Close of Business Monday.
Close of Business Monday.
Monday. Yeah. You're not going to stay up.
They could drop it off at the village president's.
With that out of the way, Jada, would you like to call the roll, please?
Mr. Colton Maxx?
No.
Mr. Lerner?
Yes.
Mr. Rosner?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mrs. Torpe?
Yes.
Jada, can you speak into the microphone, please?
Oh. Mr. Chambers?
Yes.
And Ms. Harris?
Yes.
Okay, so, the application's been deemed conditionally complete. The materials must be turned in. The remaining materials must be turned in. Will you inform, how is that going to work? You going to inform legal counsel?
I will.
Didn't mean to steal your thunder. Thank you, Patrick. Okay, moving on. Application to be heard, case number 234, 1014 Academy Street Corporation, block 2013, lot 3, 14 Academy Street, preliminary and final site plan. Applicant proposes to divide the premises into separate uses for a restaurant, continued use, and retail stores. It is my understanding that we received correspondence from the applicant since the last meeting. Somebody could just clarify that we did receive that and what we were told?
Yes.
Yes, and they asked that it be carried on to the June meeting?
Yes.
Okay. I don't suppose anybody here has an objection to that? Okay, so, the next meeting date, just, that it's going to be carried to, again, is Monday, June 2, 2014, at 7:30 PM. This would be deemed adequate, so that the applicant does not have to submit notice again? Is that correct?
This is for Academy Street?
Yes. They've noticed, right, Jada?
Yes.
Okay. Yes. Okay. Okay, moving on then, to case number 231, Luther P. Turner, Jr., and Hazel A. Turner, block 704, lot 1, 14 Kingman Road, minor subdivision. Applicant is proposing to subdivide the existing lot to create two lots, with the intent to construct a one-family dwelling on the new lot. The last, when we discussed this at the last meeting, my recollection is that we heard that the application was rejected by the Historic Planning Commission of the township. Have there been any new developments in this matter?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, the HPC did turn them down in their application for a significative appropriateness for a subdivision, and they have since filed with the zoning board an appeal from that decision, which is pending.
Okay. So, the case remains pending here until such time, unless we wanted to extinguish the application, which I believe we have no, nobody has any intention of doing.
Good choice, Mr. Chairman.
I certainly have no such intention. Does anybody wish to discuss this further? Nope. Okay. All right, this takes us through all of the applications. There is, obviously, the discussion on the statutory review of the ordinance for the CDBD redevelopment plan has already been heard, which leaves us with appointments for the planning board subcommittees. After the last meeting, at which this was discussed very briefly, Jada did send out, thank you, Jada, the list of the various committees, which are included here, as well as the current membership on the committee, and the, a description of the work of that committee. Before we go into a discussion of who might be interested in joining what committees, or who will be appointed in their absence, does anybody have any questions about the committees, about the, you know, anything about this, being a member of a committee, or what have you? Did you have a question?
I just didn't really understand what you just said.
So, there are these four committees, and then there are also four liaison positions. And I was just asking whether or not, before I started asking for volunteers for a particular committee, or to be a liaison, whether or not anybody had any questions about what the committees do, or anything along those lines. Okay. So, hearing none, I think that, I'd like to sort of see if I can get some people to volunteer for different committees. The master plan committee, Michael and I are on. It says three vacant, but I don't believe there's any requirement that there be a certain number of people on any committee. Obviously, I would prefer not to have a committee of two, but there doesn't have to be five, per se. So, and I personally don't feel as though I need to be on this committee, per se. So, my question is, is there anybody who wishes to serve on the master plan committee?
I'll volunteer.
Okay, wonderful. Okay. Willian? All right, other volunteers?
I would also be interested.
Okay, great. Okay. Other volunteers?
I'd be interested.
Wonderful.
I'm going to stay on it.
Okay, so, I think that I will take myself off.
Mr. Chairman, I don't think you can have five members on the committee.
You just stepped off.
I'm stepping off the committee.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
That was fast.
Okay, next, we're moving on to the second committee, land use and ordinances.
Excuse me, before you move on, you need a chair of that committee, the master plan.
You would be the most senior member of that committee.
I'll take it.
Is that okay with the rest of you?
I'm ready to nominate him.
Thanks. I was hoping Neil would take it.
I've never been on it before, so I don't know exactly what I'd be doing yet.
Okay. Land use and ordinances, Reverend Wilson, Danny Allen, Michael Miller, and so, is there anybody who wishes to be on the land use and ordinances committee? I will volunteer to be on that committee.
You got the chair.
I didn't say that. Actually, since neither of the other two are here, I'm going to volunteer one of them. Anybody else wish to be on that?
I do some of this with the planning and zoning committees, so I guess if we're going to coordinate it, I should be on it as well.
Okay.
That's great.
All right, and I think that takes us to the number of four, which I think is the magic number we don't surpass. So, I will have a conversation with Reverend Wilson and with Danny, to see if one of them would like to chair the committee. Site plan subdivision, Michael is on. We look for other volunteers. Now, we are missing, how many members here tonight, other than Reverend Wilson? We're missing two? How are we missing? Michael Lerman, right? Okay.
Can I just explain that committee?
Please.
It really hasn't operated to the way we've really wanted it to operate, but after an application is approved, we've tried to speed up the process, that if the developer has minor changes, he can come before the site plan committee. Site plan committee would meet, recommended to the planning board, rather than have to come up and make a full-blown presentation. I think we've used it a couple of times, and it has worked, but we haven't used it enough, in my opinion, but we also need some members. It's not that time-consuming, and it can meet during the day, or at anybody's convenience. So, we could use some volunteers.
I suggest we appoint some of the members who aren't here tonight.
Well, Michael absolutely gets volunteered, so... Maybe one more person?
But it would be nice to have three.
I agree with Mr. Miller, because when this committee does act, it really, it has a great deal of influence upon the board, so I think it's good to have at least three.
In the meantime, I'll go on.
Thank you, Adam. Okay. Okay, and governance and personnel?
I'm actually interested in this one, though.
Okay.
Usually, the chair, wasn't the chair on this one?
I don't know.
I thought Tom was on this.
No.
Wasn't Tom on this? No?
I'll talk to the other three members to see if I can get them to volunteer for one more committee.
Well, we need one on the site plan committee.
Right. Oh, because I was going to... Mr. Village President, you've been awfully silent. Could we perhaps convince you to serve as a third member of the site plan subdivision committee?
As long as it honestly doesn't meet too frequently.
With that caveat, you are drafted, sir. Thank you.
But I don't want to hold it back from meeting more.
All right, now we need our liaisons. I'm going to assume Reverend Wilson will continue as the liaison to the Chamber of Commerce. I'm going to go out in a limb and suggest that, Neil, maybe you want to be the liaison to the Environmental Commission?
I already am.
So, there we have it. Okay. And a liaison to Main Street?
Well, Main Street doesn't really exist.
Sounds like Village Heights.
Right. I'm assuming, Willian, that might be something you're interested in?
Yes.
Okay.
I'm already volunteering.
Great. Can you just make sure, Jada, that we change the name to reflect that it's not Main Street anymore? Does anybody wish to be the liaison to the development committee?
I'm on the development committee, see if I can just pull that up, Dave.
Okay. Great. I think that means we've filled out our roster. I want to thank you all very much for volunteering, to serve in one position or another. Is there any other business, or anything anybody else would like to discuss? Well, hearing nothing else, I'm going to say our meeting is adjourned. Thank you, and good night.
Thank you.